Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How is everybody? My name is Jeffrey Ginsburg and I am the moderator. And I'm calling the meeting to order. It's time for the meeting to start. I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the notice. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries? As you all know, tonight we are here to act on the fiscal year 2022 budget as recommended by the Board of Finance. In the total amount, of fifty-one million, five hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars. The Board of Finance recommendations are those presented at the preliminary budget hearing on April nineteenth, 2021. According to the Charter, Section six dash two H, each and every recommended budget item shall be considered. And that the budget as recommended by the Board of Finance shall be deemed to have been appropriated unless the sum is increased, decreased, or eliminated by a vote of the town meeting with no less than two hundred and fifty eligible voters present and voting, and sixty percent thereof required to carry any motion to increase, decrease, or eliminate any item. No recommended budget item may be increased to an amount greater than the original request for appropriation. I am going to give about five minutes to establish a count. I need a count. If we have the requisite two hundred and fifty people, I will need to know the sixty percent is one sixty. If it's more, I'll need to know that number. If it's less, then that means we will not have the requisite number of two fifty. Sometimes referred to as a quorum, it's truly not a quorum. There's no need for a quorum at this meeting, this is the town meeting, to determine the budget. What's at issue is whether there's enough voters, that being two hundred and fifty, in order to carry on a vote of the recommended budget. So, if everyone outside has their number, please come inside, make your way in, and we're gonna start. I'm gonna give five minutes for everybody to make their way in, and then we're gonna start. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the official count. The count was made by the registrar. As you know, the count is all important. Unless there's two hundred and fifty people, we don't have enough people as qualified voters to vote on a proposed budget. Again, it's two hundred and fifty that's needed. I have been advised at the official count, as of this time, to six thirty-six PM this evening, is two hundred and thirty-one. There's a request made that I postponed calling the meeting. I'll grant that request to give people who are parking, getting out of their cars, an opportunity to get in.
In the old days, they were able to start the meeting at six thirty and not get leave.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At the request of a number of people who were kind enough to get here on time, to give some additional time for those who are parking the cars, I granted that request. And so it's now six forty-six PM. However, the people who are strictly construing the statute have asked me to make sure that people who have arrived have not departed. And so, to satisfy that request, we're gonna need to do a recount to make sure that we have the two fifty. So, everybody, please, stay. If you get up, you will not be counted. If you want to be counted and participate, which I urge you everyone to do, stay seated, and we will start the recount now. Again, I'll repeat myself, I said it before, I'll say it again. All voters, please be seated, sit in your chairs. If you're not seated, you won't be counted. It's a request. You need to, obviously, if you need to stand for some reasonable reason, if your back hurts or whatever, please, you can feel free to do so, but it's helpful to have people be in an orderly way so that they can be counted, that's all. Start the count. Alright, everybody who's seated is gonna be counted, the count's starting right now. Please, everybody, be seated, it's really helpful. I appreciate it.
Okay, cards, like a down?
She was the last one allowed.
What?
But now that they know that, they wanna count.
They really think this is an accurate way of doing this? This is not. There's no way this, I don't think my head or something is gonna work. I think we should ask for a recount if they get a number different from two fifty-one.
Let the mathematician count. Can't they just figure out how many chairs are here, some crap?
If they really wanted the recount, they should have us all get back out in line and come back in. That's the face of confidence right there.
They're still out there. Everybody's gotta be allowed in.
It's a town! It's not an exclusion, people were-
You have no right to do that to people.
There are still people outside, they're not letting in! It's ridiculous, people are here. Tell them, you're the selectwoman, make the decision! You can't say no! You're right here, make the decision! You're not gonna make the decision! She's not making the decision! This is who you all voted for! She can't even make the decision to allow people to vote! No! And you're condescending, and I wanted to say that on the video last time! You are so condescending to everybody in this crowd!
Guys, we're gonna do a vote now of to let people in. Everybody who votes to let everybody outside in, raise your hand! We need to see majority hands!
Can you announce it with a microphone? People can't hear you.
We're gonna let everybody in.
Thank you!
Am I in Fairfax County or whatever? County meeting?
I'm gonna count again, just to confirm my number. Do people leave these seats?
Yeah.
This is really helping out. What? Oh, I didn't count, I didn't count.
They're bad, I bet you she has a hat.
Everybody who has not yet been checked in, you're gonna be checked in, okay? Just be patient.
Okay, this might be saying religious, but at some point, maybe one of us will leave the kids, take them to get food.
And we will be bright and tell them.
I don't know about that.
Why, because the first vote, you try and then leave, and then whatever happens, happens.
I heard him saying, I mean, this should end. At most they do the count, rather than two fifty, but he didn't even know what sixty percent they were counting. And so, we need to close the meeting in two hours, so we're not gonna have a chance to leave.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna start the meeting, okay? And when we get time to vote, we'll make sure that there's two fifty, okay? I want everybody to have an opportunity to get in and be counted. Being liberal with the timeline. I'm a moderator, I'm trying to be moderate. All right, so, just a couple announcements, there are porta potties outside if anybody needs to get up and use the bathroom. Before we do a vote on a particular motion, we'll take a count to make sure that the 250 are here. We will be using those voting signs, those pieces of paper that you were given. Under the charter provision 6-2, we will be going line by line on the budget. And before we begin, the first selectman, Beth Keller, will address. And then the town finance director will address. And then I'm going to want to hear some public comment from four citizens voters who are here to give different views. Once we've had those different views aired, I will start to entertain a motion to begin the meeting that will lead to a vote. So with that, I'd like to introduce our first elected Beth Keller.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Woodbridge's annual town meeting. I first want to thank. Good evening, better, okay, sorry guys. And welcome to the Town of Woodbridge's annual town meeting. I first want to thank the town employees and particularly department heads for being so flexible this past year as we have all navigated through the pandemic. Town staff have worked very hard to keep every, each other and our many residents safe while finding unique and clever ways to serve the public from a careful distance. Despite the pandemic, we are all meeting together tonight in person with safe distancing and required masks. Many of you might recall that we met virtually for the preliminary budget hearing on April 19th and again for the annual town meeting on May 17th. At the May 17th meeting, we tried our best to follow the town charter and keep everyone safe. We certainly had the best of intentions, but we quickly learned that the virtual format for a large meeting and our town charter are incompatible. Betsy Yagla spoke with Tom Hennig at the. Thank you. Betsy Yagla spoke with Tom Hennig on the Freedom of Information Commission and he told her that he heard from five to 10 towns that had the exact same kind of problems that we had. And we, and that was the virtual format just doesn't work for the kind of meeting or our voting scenario. This evening, we will do everything we can to give everyone a voice on the budget. I must also thank our registrars of voters, panel and Anna, Jerry Shaw, town clerk Stephanie Charlel, Leo, Betsy Yagla, building maintenance department, our custodians, our police and all our volunteer fire department members who helped put this meeting together tonight. Also, a big thank you also to the board and commission members, department heads, boards of finance, board of selectmen for all the time they have taken since last fall to put this budget together. Our annual budget reflects our shared values and is a balancing act of our commitments to provide excellent education for our children and show our respect to taxpayers by carefully budgeting and responsible spending on essential town services. This budget was approved by both the boards of selectmen and finance. In order to have the zero increase in the mill rate that some have recently suggested we try to achieve, we will need to find approximately $1.25 million in additional reductions for FY 2022 from this budget. This is from the town of finance director and I think Tony knows, I'm sorry. I'm not going to argue at this point, that's what he told me today. I love you guys down there, but that's what Tony told me. Over the past several years, we have consolidated staff positions and reduced programs. In fact, the town portion of the budget, not including the boards of education, is 0.12% lower in fiscal 2021 than it was in fiscal year 2016. Our pride and joy and budgetary priority has always been education. Please keep in mind that nearly 62% of our budget funds are our public schools. Thank you for your time and I will now call an administrative officer and finance director, Tony Genovese, who will now guide us through the budget details. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Hot mic you got here. No, that's okay. Can you all hear me? Yeah, okay. Thank you, Beth. As you indicated, our budget process starts in September when our departments and commissions present requests. And we gather those requests and by January are presented to our boards of selectmen and finance for their review. The boards conduct a series of meetings and the board of selectmen presents a recommended budget by the end of February and the board of finance presents a preliminary budget which is sent to the budget hearing in April. It's really a collaborative process which begins in September and extends through April. And after the budget hearing, you have the budget presented to you this evening. When crafting the budget, the town begins with four main priorities, which is to control taxes, to maximize our efficiency and effectiveness when we can. We've done some staff reductions, other cost-saving measures and department realignments. We continue our fiscal stewardship, which is to not only provide a AAA bond rating, but also, which is the highest bond rating you can get, but also we try to create a budget and an audit which is easy to understand and to read and help you to understand where your tax dollars were spent. So to that end, you know, we always welcome new suggestions for our budget document each year. And finally, we provide quality services. Over the past five years, the town is committed to becoming more efficient. We've realigned some services and restructured some departments while maintaining the same level of service. This has resulted in the elimination of eight full-time positions and changing two full-time positions to part-time positions. So as Beth indicated, our expenditures for the town portion of the budget is 0.12% lower than in 2016 for FY 21. This is just to look at some of the positions that were eliminated in our drop to up part-time includes a grants coordinator, senior clerk, finance clerk, two police officers, lieutenant, parks director, mechanic. Those are some of the eliminated positions. This chart shows the history of our expenditures from, in comparison to 2016 and then each year out. So you can see the, I hope you can see that chart. The orange line shows the town, total town expenditures, which is in FY 22 for the budget you have before you, which is just under 12%. So if you compare the FY 22 expenditures to 16, it's just under a 12% increase between those years. The non-education expenditure portion of that budget is a little over 3%. So as indicated earlier, you can see that the town portion of the budget is, when comparing 22 to 16, which is five, six, seven years later, the town portion is just a little over 3% higher than it was in 16. And education is just below 18% of the, higher than it was in 16. So it just gives you an idea of over the last few years where the expended tax dollars have been spent. When creating the budget for FY 22, there were some issues that we had to resolve or at least to put in the budget for the new fiscal year. The first is that there were $364,000 in restored COVID cuts. These were cuts that were made in 21 that included parks maintenance, senior center staff, recreation programs, library, staff and some pool and gyms, mainly because those services were not anticipated to be used during 21. So as those programs come back online, it was, those were restored partially to 2022. There's a decline in non-tax revenues in the 22 budget, which is about $60,000 reduction from the AMITI surplus. As you know, we get some AMITI surplus each year, that's a very volatile source of revenue as it's not guaranteed in any one particular year. And so it's just over $600,000 in the 22 budget, but could be eliminated, I suppose, at any time. There is a minimal grand list growth again this year with a 0.72% reduction in the grand list, which is, has been a problem for many years. And on a positive note, our debt service dropped by $564,000 due to the borrowing in 2000 that was paid off. So there was the, so open space purchases and the fuel remediation from the back of town hall, which were both paid off this past fiscal year. Majority of our budget, 93%, is from property taxes. And so you can see the majority of our revenue comes from, in fact, taxpayers. We have a small amount that comes from the state, which is about 1.83%. Most of that is in town road aid or education funding. And we have department charges about 1.5%. Here's a snapshot of some of the increases for the current year. We had an increase in property taxes, 3.42% in department charges. For our expenditures, the expenditure budget is $51,566,481, which breaks down to roughly 30% for the Woodbridge Board of Education, 38% for a town portion and 32% for the AMITI Regional School District. Our expenditures for the FY 22 budget are up 2.96%. What I want to pay particular attention to are some of those COVID programs that were restored. You'll notice on the bottom left, the library is up a little under 20%. Human services 10% and recreation 50%. That's due to primarily to restored programming that was eliminated in 21. There is a reduction in general government and in debt service as indicated earlier. So the grand list increases, I'm sorry, the mill rate increases from 41.53 to 42.64, which is about 2.67%. So while expenditures can increase about $1.25 million, in order, if you want to have a flat mill rate, it's $1.25 million. That's due to the increase in the grand list that was mentioned earlier. So the increase in the grand list helps to make up for some of the increasing expenditures, so. Sure, yeah, I can see, I can repeat that. I'll be the only one in here without a mask. So the, I'll repeat that for you. The mill rate was 41.53 in the 2021 budget. And in 21, 22, it's 42.64, which is a 2.67% increase. So in order to have a flat mill rate, the, you would need to reduce, the either reduce expenditures or increase revenues by $1.25 million. Okay? Okay, thank you.
Before entertaining motions, I'd like to hear from four people, four voters, to stand at the microphone in the center and give different views. Because you've heard one view here, the administration's view, I think it's appropriate to hear a view from the, from a different perspective. Whatever that perspective may be, I would like to have four speakers please rise and give brief, brief comment.
I'm assuming those weren't pre-arranged people, right? Anybody can do that?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Please state your name first, my next line. My name is Chuck Pine, 162 Central Road. As far as the question is concerned, historically, it continues to creep up. No one, I think, can argue with that, the number is speak for themselves. And there does not seem to be a commitment to throttle that back to a level that stops affecting our property values. Our property values are very much tied to the mill rate. And I don't think anybody here would dispute that as well. And our property values are not in great shape compared to many other towns in the area. Yes, there's been a spike because everyone's trying to leave New York, right? But that party's almost over. And we're going to be left with diminished values and everyone who's been here for three or four years, they remember two-thirds of our property values went down in revaluation. That's a function of the mill rate. Now, I'm not suggesting that we're going to pick off any individual line item tonight because the only people in this room who have the real detail as to where the money's being spent and where we can get some help as far as the mill rate are sitting up there. So I think it is incumbent upon us as a town to simply send a broad message. As the old Oliver Swift, I think you better think that out again. I think we have to get to a point where we've got to say as a town, enough is enough on the never-ending mill rate increase, the never-ending, I hate to use the word assault, I'll say the reductions in our property value. And since we have a forum tonight, and I'm thrilled there's a forum, by the way, thank you everybody for coming, believe it or not, thank you. I can now have time. Now I have time to speak up as majority of voters and send a message to board of finance, we thank you for your time, but if it wasn't enough, please go back and reconsider going forward. Thank you.
Good evening, James Moriarty. I probably will not be a softer Mr. Pine, if that's okay. I am not in favor of taxes, but let's think about what we're here to do, okay? My understanding of the charter, and I would ask the town attorney to clarify this upon long, if you have more than a 10% total reduction today, you come back in seven to 10 days. Not with a new budget, but to reconsider the existing budget. So if you cut every line item today to zero, you come back in seven to 10 days and you reconsider the exact same budget. If you want to make cuts, that, fine, make cuts. But if you cut it all the way down to zero, you're just going to be back here in seven to 10 days doing the exact same thing. So what can you cut? My understanding is you can't cut AMITI because the referendum's already passed. Nobody seems to want to cut Eater. So now you're down to 30% of the budget. You're going to cut Grec or the library, which is under a million dollars. You're going to cut the police department, you're going to cut the fire department. You have to think about things like collective bargaining. Can you actually cut a police officer? I don't know the answer to that. You obviously can't cut debt service, the town has to pay its debt. So where do you cut? And I think this is a process that people have to get more involved in early. I attended virtually the board of finance meeting in April. There was maybe four comments. Nobody was there, and to the extent people were there, nobody spoke up. That was the opportunity to speak up. The budget is before us, yes, it increases taxes. $1.25 million spread over every property in Woodbridge is fairly insignificant. What's that? To, to most people. Yes, to most people, $1.25 million spread over every household in Woodbridge is insignificant. Okay, you know, people can disagree with me, that's fine, that's why we're here. My point is, approve this budget as is. Let's start the process again and let's everybody get more involved early on and next year, we can have a budget that doesn't increase the mill rate. Thank you.
Last one, I'm just going to go ahead and call it, Kelo Sanders, 44th Avenue. So this is the second.
I'm sorry, be, be lower and say your name again.
Kelo Sanders, 44th Avenue. This is the second town meeting I'm having, the first time we've made a budget today, budget meeting, the first time we made it to 25. So first of all, thank you for participating, I think that's a really, really important thing for us to be doing, especially now. So I really appreciate people coming and I appreciate you guys being lenient on giving people the time to talk and get here. So first and foremost, thank you for that, we understand and we understand it. Second of all, I think there are other ways to decide as cuts to look at this budget. There are ways to increase the revenue that we bring in, whether it be working with the state. There are ways to increase the revenue that we bring in, um, whether it be working with the state or figuring out other ways to bring your businesses in, to off-staff, putting the majority of our income on homeowners. There's got to be another way. So it's not just about coming out here consistently talking about what we can cut or what we need to get rid of. It's how can we bring in more revenue for this town and increase the services and increase the livelihoods we already have here that you're still lucky to have. So I would just like, my guess, my point is, this is not a Democrat, Republican or partisan, or a bipartisan conversation about a budget. And I think as we listen to Beth talk, listen to anyone talk, we can be respectful of that and look at how we can all work together instead of cutting each other down too far away so we can find ways to bring more money into the town. I would just think if we could talk a little bit more about that side as well, that would be great.
Good evening. My name is Bridget Buckhite Carney. I live on Race Brook Road.
I'm sorry, would you please say a little slower, more slow, your name.
My name is Bridget Buckhite Carney. And I live on Race Brook Road. I am relatively new to town. I came within seconds of the pandemic and as a result, I knew no one. Um, but my husband is a member of the New Haven Fire Department and we are happy to be here, or so I thought until I saw the budget. Um, I didn't know that you could spend more because I have a lot of projects that I'd like to work on. I didn't know that you could just get more and more loan and done with it. So I'm not a fan of a zero budget and I don't think anyone here is suggesting that. But budget is made out of two components, revenue and expenditures. So I would suggest that if we do in fact need an increase in the mill rate and an increase in taxes, that one of the ways that you can do that is look at the lack of growth that was identified in this. Likewise, with the capitalization budget, I would say that looking at something long-term when we are in the middle of a pandemic and when we have extraneous concerns, a pending recession among other things, that capitalization does not necessarily work right now. And finally, I would say that because the budget has been based on a lack of growth, if anything, we should be looking to pay off our bond. And while I do understand that loans are at historic low, I do also understand that at some point, my daughter will have to pay for that loan. And as such, I ask respectfully that we think about paying off the loans and then do the planning, not to think about a zero-based budget, but in fact, a budget that fits within our means. And to think about the fact that if there is a lack of growth, this is a great opportunity for us to tighten our belts and think about the true long-term value of the money that is at stake. I thank you for this time.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Christopher Perry.
Say your name.
Christopher Perry, of 1442 Drive. Um, this is my first time attending a public meeting. Fairly new to the neighborhood since August of last year. Uh, basically what sparked me to come up here was the gentleman mentioned saying that most of this is a managed tax increase, which is probably true. But everybody's individual situations are to their own. I currently live, myself, my wife, two beautiful kids, my mother and her parents as well. And we have one day coming away. Now, managing family is everybody's responsibility. We live within our budget and our means. Problem with the government budget is that they just kind of assume that if we can just decrease taxes, we have to fix it. And if this cost occurs across everybody that's responsible for our good township. So what I have to say is that we should probably exercise some compassion towards, uh, making decisions that affect everybody as a whole. Uh, I've been substantially busy throughout and I don't like to get where I'm at. And, uh, I don't potentially like to give away things without them being public. Now, if we're already fixing a budget, that makes sense. And we really don't want to cut, save or other expenditures. But what I will say is going forward, we have more people paying attention now. So I think we should be responsive and make the government work for us instead of us working together. Thank you.
So, to summarize, I think what we heard is the administration's perspective as to why the budget needs to be increased, what the dangers would be if the budget were decreased, what, where would you look to make the cuts? And then we heard from five voters here tonight. Um, and some of those ideas from the first speaker was, um, we should make a better effort to limit the increases. Property values have not been keeping pace. Enough is enough with the mill rate and the taxes. Our second speaker talked about, um, not in favor of taxes, that there is a 10% rule here that we need to be concerned about. Uh, AMITI cannot be cut. Beecher lacks, cuts in the Beecher budget lack a strong desire from townspeople. That leaves 38% left in the budget. And where do we cut? Do we cut the rec department, the library, the police department and so on and so forth? Our third speaker talked about looking for increases in revenues, perhaps bringing businesses into Woodbridge and trying to find other ways in which we might be able to increase our revenues so as to offset the higher mill rate and the higher taxes. Our fourth speaker, who is new to town, indicated that we should look at both revenue and expenditures, realize that there's been a lack of growth, seek a more long-term view. Capitalization may not be the answer today and our, one of our priorities should be to pay off the bond. And our last speaker talked about individual situations, that everybody's individual situation is important because it affects everybody individually. Um, and that it's important for all individuals to live within their means. And increased taxes don't fix everything. So I think I've summarized the general principles that are involved here. Um, the hope that I have is that I can focus, um, arguments on the motions that are to be made. So now, what I would like to hear from someone, could be anyone, to get up at the microphone and make a motion to modify, that would mean increase or decrease or leave a loan, whatever the motion is, to modify a particular line item on the budget. And we'll continue to hear people make motions. But before we vote on a motion, it's very important, the motion has to be seconded and we have to make sure that we have 250 people present, so we will count to make sure that we have the requisite 250. The reason why it's important to have a count is because it has to be passed pursuant to a supermajority. And I have to make sure that the 60% supermajority votes, one way or the other. I have to be able to make that count. That's my task. So I'll leave it up to anyone who wants to be called upon to make a motion.
Is it possible to ask one question?
No, that, that's out of order. I'm entertaining motions right now. There's no point of order.
Did you come up multiple times with people that spoke about debt service? Would it be possible to find out what our amount of debt is and more importantly, the interest rate on that? From our, the finance guy, you did a great job. Is there any way we can find out, is it possible to refi that because we are at historic lows?
I think that's a terrific question. What's your name? Please state your name.
Matt Browning.
Matt Browning.